In attendance this evening are board member Paula Cole, Christine Malik, John Ashmead, Superintendent Steve Nowaski, Crystal Braaki, and Tim Paulus. I am Peter Tensing. We have just concluded a very informative and interactive study session with our city council, and we thank them for their time and participation. Looking forward to more opportunities for collaboration in the future. I will ask members to take a look at the agenda, and we can entertain a motion on the agenda. I do not believe there are any updates to mention.
I'll move the agenda.
I'll second.
So we have a motion by Braaki and a second by Malik that we approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, the agenda is approved. We'll move on to item three, which is information on proposals. We do not have any delegations to receive, and so item B is the superintendent update.
Alright, so we are going to have a relatively brief update. Metro ECSU, which is a consortium of approximately 36 metro area school districts, annually puts out a report. It's available at Metro ECSU. And what we tend to do is look at how our schools are doing from a class size perspective. And as we recall, thinking about our strategic plan and trying to take some steps to allocate more funds towards the classroom, we took some significant steps this past year to attempt to reduce our class size. And what you're going to see up on the screen in front of you is one of two graphs, and we're going to begin with just sort of the average class size by grade group. Now previously, we were between the 15th and 20th average ranked class size, and so we were more in the mid-range of overall class sizes. What you're going to find, and how we read this is, is if you look at the left side, you'll see elementary. Our elementary class size average at present is 23.39, and across the metro area of the 36 districts, 23.79 is the average class size. So we have moved up to be above the average in that regard. You'll also notice from a middle school perspective, 25.94, average class size is 27.45 across the metro. And then within our senior high, our average class size is 26.87, and average class size across the metro is 27.65, leading to an overall 25.85, which is slightly over one student per classroom overall. And as we look at an overall ranking, where we rank in terms of our class size, we're the ninth smallest of 32 districts on average. Now, one of the things to note about average class sizes, that doesn't mean the actual class size your child is in. What that means is, is that as we think about our funds put into classroom teachers to make sure that we have overall class sizes, overall across all of those 36 metro districts, we are the ninth smallest in terms of class sizes. Then there is one additional piece. We talk a lot about special education and our cross subsidy in special education. What you'll notice is, we look at our K-12 overall, when you add special education in, you're going to notice that we rank fifth. And so we have the fifth smallest of overall class size and special education class size together. So one of the questions as we've been studying, why is our cross subsidy sitting where it is, or why are we using our funds to provide the education within special education that we do? Our class sizes within special education are some of the smallest within the metro area, and our class size overall from the 36, which was ninth, when you add special education in, drops all the way to fifth. So we have, again, I'm going to state that again, the fifth smallest class sizes of the 36 metro area school districts in ECSU. Again, average, when you add special education into that. Now, as we scroll down, we can also look at K-5. And so you're going to see some of the changes within how that goes. Kindergarten is an area where we need to continue to do some focus to reduce our class sizes. Well, our class size average is 21.68. It's one of the areas we are actually a little bit larger than the 21 average, and that actually ranks us 27th of the 36 districts. Grade one, we're ranked 25th, two 21st. And then you'll notice as we move up, we're ranked 10th, 9th, and 11th in class size average as we move up into the upper elementary grades. Questions in regard to class sizes?
I have a couple.
Mm-hmm.
When you say for special ed, are you talking about like self-contained classrooms? Or?
Yes, those would be self-contained classrooms or separate special education classrooms within the buildings.
Then the other thing, because of the ranking, K-2.
Mm-hmm.
And this is something that as a teacher, I struggle a lot with. Sometimes I feel that we put a lot, that by the time we want to make things nice by third grade, it may be too late. And sometimes I wonder if we should maybe switch the formula. I mean, this is like a very bigger conversation. It's just something to put it out there. That I think if we do a better foundation in the early grades, then we don't wait so long, and then to catch with MCAs in third grade, it might be kind of a patch.
Right. We have-
So I see that a lot of people, "Oh yeah, in third grade is MCA time, so we're going to put more ESL teachers," or more of this, or more of that. And then I'm just wondering, you know, if we have considered kind of feeling, you know, how to balance that out?
Yes, we definitely actually surprisingly worked to do a little bit of balancing this year, and those numbers actually went down. But yes, as you look at those rankings, the goal would be to be equitable across the grade level. So if we are ranked 9th or 10th, you would want us to be ranked 9th or 10th from kindergarten through grade two. That's what we attempted to implement this year. And so obviously, as we look at assignments and students for next year, we want to look at trying to reduce those K-1, 2 class sizes, and really place a focus there. And then even as we point out average class sizes, there are class sizes in kindergarten as low as 18, 19, and 20, and there are class sizes as high as 26 within kindergarten. So even as we look at a class size average of 21 or 21.68, that still has a reasonably large range between give or take 18 and at the top 26.
Is it like location of schools, I mean, that happen?
Yeah, in a small district like ours with four elementary schools, it becomes challenging to provide people their school choice option, and then also the class size that they would want. So for example, Sheridan Hills last year had class sizes in kindergarten of 26 and 27. This year in kindergarten, they have 19 and 20. And so if we add a section in kindergarten, and plan for that, if the students don't show up, we have to transition the students, transition a teacher. And so with only four buildings to choose from, it becomes a very complex dance.
So, I mean, I think that those reflect a couple of points that I was, that were running through my head. First off is the risk of putting too much focus on the rank. We can see that the spread between, you know, between the median, which would be out of 36 districts, that would be the 18th position, right? So the spread between median and 27th is only .8. So in other words, you can move a fraction of a student in terms of your average class size, and you might see a large change in rank. So I think we just got to be really careful with over-reading the rank. I feel that the, you know, the value is of, the average has some value. And then of course, as Steve mentioned, knowing also that the average in and of itself can be misleading in terms of the experience of any particular classroom. So I think as board members, we need to be, you know, take this information, digest it, but recognize that by no means is this a comprehensive view of what's happening.
Alright, so let me restate, because I think I understand as I'm looking at the numbers differently than I had originally walked in. So if you look at grade four, which is actually ranked 9th of 36, we have 23.81 students on average. That's about 1.8 less students. So if we were to add two students per classroom, we'd probably be around the 20th largest. And then if we took kindergarten and took one student out of every classroom, we'd actually probably be around the 14th or 15th. So we're really only talking about one or two students makes that pretty significant ranking difference.
Yeah, so I think the rank is, out of all of the data, the rank would probably be the last thing that we should, I mean, it feels good to say, "Oh, we're better." But I think it could be a misleading data point, yeah.
It's helpful to see that we've made progress, I think.
It is.
And I think that that's an affirmation of-
Yes.
-some of the work that's been done, but-
Exactly. So the fact that we're, you know, our average is better now than it was, that's reflecting the priorities that the board laid out in terms of a focus on improving classes.
And I think those numbers are, the averages are good.
Yeah.
Where I imagine in like a classroom, and with all the support that I know that we are providing with resource teachers and things, I think it looks, it looks like it been, you know, it's working, or-
Yeah. And I think, you know, in terms of your point, Paula, about thinking strategically about how we are allocating our resources, I mean, you know, I think that's a point that administration can digest and consider, and think of, you know, obviously knowing the complexities they come with that, so.
Yeah, no, it's just really a thought, because I know, and I must, I just know when the kids come in in kinder, they're already behind in comparison to, you know, more middle-class students or different neighborhoods. So I think they have a lot of catching on to do.
Sure.
But if we try to catch them up, you know, they just continually keep, you know, and just thinking of the achievement gap and things like that.
That's with our pre-K practices and stuff. Anyway, go ahead, Steve.
No.
I agree. Alright. Anything further to, any further information to present, or?
That was the conversation about class sizes. And so we will be making available the overall report, but we really wanted to focus just on that overall class size average piece, and make sure that we were just sort of acknowledging the progress that we were making, but also take a look at what our class size average is overall.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think that that's the key message for us, is that with the work that the administration has done to sort of look and restructure a little bit, sort of our allocation of FTE, we've seen an improvement in terms of our average class size, which I think that was the, that was the aim we were looking for, well, last year, two years ago when we had this conversation, so good work.
Thank you.
Very well. Any further observations or questions from board members on this item? Go ahead and move on to item C.
Transitioning to communications from non-school sources, which is commendation. Some, we actually had our study session with the mayor and the city council, but also noted in the Sun Current, Mayor Richfield, or Richfield Mayor Debbie Gattell was actually honored March 8th with a leadership award from an organization of city leaders around the country called the Democratic Municipal Officials. Mayor Gattell was named as the recipient of the group Susan Burgess Leadership Award during the Democratic Municipal Officials National Breakfast Meeting. Their quote was, "That Debbie stands out as one of the best leaders I have ever met," Democratic Municipal Officials Executive Director Barbara Moore said. In her praise of Gattell, Moore cited the City of Richfield's action on affordable housing and its role as one of the first municipalities in the state to offer paid parental leave to its employees. So congratulations to Mayor Gattell. We appreciate her partnership, and we appreciate her great leadership for the City of Richfield.
Yes, so we will, as a board, we will certainly echo that congratulations, and as well as the appreciation that we have passed on to the entire city council about the support that they have offered the schools. We can go ahead and move on to the consent agenda. If members have had an opportunity to review that, we can ask if there are any questions. Hearing none, a motion would be in order.
I'll move the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
So a motion by Paulus and a second by Ashmead that we approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, the consent agenda passes. We have no old business for this evening, so we can move on to item 6A, which is new business, Notice of Resolution to Discontinue Teaching Contracts and Place Teachers on ULA.
Yes, and so as this feels like Groundhog's Day, and we clearly do this in multiple stages, this is the time that we take the official action to actually do that discontinuation of, I believe it is, six teacher contracts. This is the next step in the process. And so what I want to remind us of is that despite a reduction of 32 positions, despite our reduction in overall students, we've worked very hard with our tenured teachers and our continuing contract teachers to try to retain as many of them as humanly possible. Previous years have had 18, previous years, last year, my understanding was we had 12, which was lower than average. We actually reduced that this year to six. Six continuing contract teachers being placed at this time on unrequested leave of absence. And so this is the next step in the process, at which time I believe they have the opportunity to claim jobs that are of, or ask for jobs that are of lower FTE or different FTE than they are currently in, but this is sort of the next step in that process.
I believe we only have five of the six tonight, and we'll have the six at our next meeting, because we did that one, a meeting after everybody else, the first five.
I believe you have six, no?
I believe that there's only five enough.
Okay. Then I believe you have five. What's that?
Five for tonight.
Five for tonight, thank you.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Nowaski or Mr. Miltier regarding the process?
Since Mr. Holgy is here, I just want to remind us that this is no reflection of performance in any way, shape, or form. What, Mr., I understand Mr. Miltier is not, is here, but Mr. Holgy would often step in at this point to say, "This is a reminder that this is about finances and positions. This actually has nothing to do with performance. We actually have high-quality teachers on this list. We actually have award-winning people that we want to keep within our organization on this list." So this is not any reflection on the performance of our staff members, and it's important for us to keep that in mind.
Do we need to move them one at a time?
I believe we can move the resolution as a group. If we have a-
I'll move the resolution of the five as a group.
I'll second.
So we have a motion by Paulus and a second by Malik. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Now pull the board. Ms. Cole?
Aye.
Ms. Malik?
Aye.
Mr. Ashmead?
Aye.
Ms. Braaki?
Aye.
Mr. Paulus?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the resolution carries. We will move forward to item B, which is policy review. We have four policies that are coming before us for our first read. The first is policy 101, District Goals. This policy was first adopted in 2013, I think it was. And now this is coming forward in light of our recent strategic planning process, maybe something to consider. Summary?
Absolutely. So we're going to see four pieces tonight that all are going to need some revision. They will probably each take three reads. So we'll begin with policy 101, which is in regard to district goals. Prior to the previous superintendent, there was a policy in regard to strategic planning. The board and superintendent moved to what was defined as a continuous improvement process. And now we are going to be recommending to transition back to strategic planning, as we do have a strategic plan, and then integrating the strategic plan goals within our board policy packet. And so that will require a rewrite of our district goals, policy 101, transitioning back to describe the strategic plan, the strategic planning process, and then the goals that have come out of our strategic plan. That also incorporates the input of at least two or three board members who shared that same information.
Certainly. So given that this policy is going to require extensive revision, would you be looking at this point in time for specific input from board members, or would you like to take a stab at the rewrite and then have us provide input?
So why don't we take a shot at a rewrite? We actually have a previous from just prior to this, a strategic plan policy that was board policy 101. So what we'd like to do is review the old policy, update it with new state statute and new strategic plan language, and bring that back to the board for the second read.
Are there questions on that process, or input that members would like to provide?
Sounds good. Sounds good.
I think we are all in agreement that that'll be a good process to follow. So we will look forward to sort of the first draft of the rewrite of policy 101 at our next meeting. We can move on to policy 102 regarding equal educational opportunity.
And equal educational opportunity has to do with ensuring that we provide opportunity for all students and that we are following appropriate policy. It actually was reaffirmed by the board in 2003. What we are suggesting is that we actually review new MSBA policy. We review state statute. Some things have changed with some more open language since then, and that we take this and add additional language that is appropriate based on state statute.
Feedback regarding that proposed plan?
I think that is great. The one thing that I shared prior to the meeting is if the Richfield Public Schools Human Rights Officer title is referenced in the updated policy, just to make sure that that's an accurate title for somebody on our staff, and if not, that we change the title to reflect who a student, a staff member, somebody in the community should be going to, so it's easy to identify who is our point of contact for this as a district.
Yeah, I would certainly second and support the notion. I mean, I think that this policy does need to be one that adheres closely to statutory language requirements.
Absolutely.
Very good. So we can go ahead and move forward to consideration of policy 104, which is a drug-free workplace, drug-free school.
Right, and similarly, a board policy that was reaffirmed in 2003. Some things need to be also updated to go with statute and also come with information in regard to, actually it was in 2008, was amended, but updated again with things like e-cigarettes and some of the new things that are out in the world that we have kids exposed to nowadays, and updating our language to reflect, reflect the current situation in regard to alcohol and drug-free schools.
And adults, adults are exposed to.
Yes.
Adults, yes. Yeah, so e-cigarette, and of course, we have a tobacco-free policy that is coming up in 2005, so e-cigarettes again become a pertinent item of conversation there. The main thing that caught my eye as a potential, and again, I honestly don't know what the precedent or statute regarding this would be, but that is, you know, the biggest thing that I think has changed is medical marijuana. Of course, the medical marijuana law in the state has reclassified that substance to some extent. And so to the extent that medical marijuana is regulated as a prescribed treatment, I think we have policy that can cover that, but we may want to be, we may not want to be explicit in that regard, or see if there's any guidance from MSBA around that particular, that particular issue. Are there any other observations from other board members?
The part in, part five procedures, there be, where it says that employees with prescriptions of, with controlled substances have to tell their employer about that prescription, and I don't know how I feel about that. I mean, because I went through the, when I saw this, I went through the actual stat, all the legal numbers and letters that are there to see what they were, and they were usually morphine or derivatives of that, so mostly painkillers and, so what is the connection between, like, telling the employer, was, I mean, is it going to be like a, is the employee going to be chastised by not saying, or is it because we are going to assume something, and so that, I mean, what is the thinking behind that?
I don't know, but what it sounds like we need to do is, is take a look in regard to statute, in regard to employee privacy, and what is appropriate for us to know.
To see how this interacts with HIPAA primarily. And we need to understand if there is any, if there is any statute on this that specifically refers to physical possession of the substance on the school grounds, as opposed to if, you know, let's say, an individual is prescribed Adderall, and they take a dose in the morning at home.
Or like anxiety medicine. I mean, I didn't see the anxiety in the list. It was really mostly morphine, codeine, and things like that.
Well, but angiolytics are last three.
But like those, yeah, you, those have like specific requests, you know, to be sent to pharmacies, so they're like definitely controlled, so. And I assume a lot of teachers are taking heroin these days.
Well, I don't know, but what I will do is, we will check into the, like I said, we'll check into the statute to determine what is appropriate for us to have shared, and I will definitely have that information for you prior to our next meeting. And we'll work that into a draft of, or second draft, second reading of the policy.
Yeah, to me, the key, the, to me, the main point is relative to, so, I mean, I think if we're, if we're thinking about what this policy is intended to do, it's not intended to in any way influence the treatment of a medical condition, but it is intended to keep a safe environment for our staff and for our students. And to the extent that controlled substances are physically present, you know, in the environment, I think that we do have some responsibility to be aware of and regulate that. So I think if we keep our focus on the safe environment, hopefully that'll help us to be appropriately narrow in terms of the definition of policy. And if we have any statutory guidance in this regard, that would be helpful.
Perfect.
Any other observations on the, on policy 104?
I just have a question. So page five of the policy is where, you know, any staff member signs that they have received a copy. And just wondering if we amend the language, or every time we amend the language, do staff members then need to re-sign it, or is this an annual thing that we ask all staff members to sign? It's more of an implementation question than it is actually language in the policy, but as we've been discussing changes, it made me wonder if there are implications for our staff who have already signed this document.
Also, the, so first, I'm going to share that I am drug-free, but I have not seen or signed the document outside of the policy. And so in two years, I would say that clearly part of our orientation, we do have anti-bullying efforts, we do a wide range of professional development, but as we look to seeing this policy played out, we can certainly, as we work this through, determine if this is an annual policy or something to have signed by our staff, or what is appropriate. And so as, prior to our next meeting on the 18th, I'll work through with human resources, but also work through a statute, what are the appropriate pieces in this regard?
As someone who's been hired a few times, I think the only time you would sign something like this is at the point of hire, and you might be given an updated list. That doesn't mean you agree with the updates.
Yeah. Yeah, interesting. To what extent do, I mean, I guess that my feeling would be if we are statutorily required, you know, if this, if this, if this, yeah, it's not very clear on page five, is it, Crystal, exactly why that's there? It's sort of implied that, that all of our employees will get this, but I don't know that we state that explicitly anywhere in the policy.
No, when I read through it, it didn't say that employees will read through and sign the policy.
Yeah.
So again, something to, looking to revise the term.
No, it says, "If each employee shall be provided a written notice of his drug-free workplace, drug-free school policy, and shall be required to acknowledge whether she has received it." So that's in section 5D.
Right, there it is.
So-
Okay.
Does not say with what frequency. My guess is that you-
Yeah, when you're at the point of hire.
If you're asking people to acknowledge it, it's the point of hire. They can choose to accept it or not.
Yep. So let's take a look at, let's take a look at what statute is, you know, and/or MSBA model policy kind of guidance we can get there, and then, and then let's make sure that our practice conforms to our policy.
Absolutely. I'll have updates on both of those.
Perfect. Policy 105.
And that is the tobacco-free environment, and similarly needing to update the language. It hasn't been updated since 2008, and so looking through with things like e-cigarettes, which fit into both of those policies, but clearly as a tobacco piece, and then any other methodology that would be appropriate to add into here.
Yeah. So I'm sorry, I'm puzzling over some thinking in my head. Basically, this policy is establishing a tobacco-free environment period on the, on school property. So we don't really have any reason to worry about secondhand smoke that's not really even, that's already prohibited.
Correct. And it looks like there was a significant attempt to go through the language of what was tobacco at the time, cigarette cigars, and so on and so forth, a large list, which also means excluding some things that may be currently on the list now. So looking at that.
So the e-cigarette thing was the one thing that came to my mind. Other observations? So the e-cigarette thing was the one thing that came to my mind, other observations? Alright, oh, actually, here's another piece, sorry. And that would be nicotine replacement. And it may be since this, since this policy has been written, that nicotine gum, nicotine lozenges, nicotine patches have all become available over the counter as aids to people who are trying to quit smoking. And I don't know that we want to or need to do anything there, but I guess you could take a look at that and see if there's any, see if there's any, anything to think about there.
Okay.
And I don't, I honestly don't know how those are regulated by the state for sale to minors. But that might be a precedent to think about. Other, any other thoughts on the tobacco-free policy? Alright, so somebody will have their work cut out for this.
So summing up, significant revision to one oh one, changing from continuous improvement to strategic planning, and doing a full rewrite, looking at the other three policies, updating them with regard to language, double-checking them with regard to statute, and then also making sure that we are clarified for additional things that have come into our society in the last five, six years.
Very good, we can go ahead and move on to item C, which is donations.
Uh, we have one donation, three hundred and fifty dollars from Richfield Bloomington Credit Union to the Richfield Middle School, purchasing donuts and supporting the Richfield Middle School Honor Society for a large honor, honor roll breakfast, and the Honor Society.
I would ask for a motion that we accept the donations.
I move we accept the donations.
Second.
So motion by Ashmead, second by Cole, we accept the donation with gratitude, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, and motion carries. Thank you again to Richfield Bloomington Credit Union for their support of our, of our district. Item seven is advanced planning, we will begin with a legislative update.
So obviously, the legislature is in session, they are in the ping-pong game of bouncing things back and forth. We were asked to support more conversation about compensatory education. I decided to pass at this time. Basically, our work last year created additional flexibility with regard to compensatory education funding, allowing us to use more across the district. There was a conversation about a new bill to make a larger ask for full flexibility of all comprehensive education or compensatory education funding. I decided that that didn't fully align to the direction that we're going, and so we're gonna sit that one out. But it's good to note that districts and ourselves have been allowed more flexibility with our comp ed funding to make sure that we can support all of our buildings and all of our students across the entire district. Additionally, note that they're having conversations right now in regard to where finances will go. Some of the conversations bounced back and forth, have to do with special education cross-subsidy, which was not in anyone's bill, but there's been significant push to talk about funding a little bit towards special education cross-subsidy, possibly funding towards pre-K, which also was not in an initial bill, but the governor is stepping forward and pushing that, as that was his significant agenda. And those would be the main updates. And we have yet to have significant bills that specifically relate to Richfield yet at this time to go through.
Any other questions on action at the Capitol? Very well, item B is information and questions from the board. Anyone has anything to share?
I do not.
Yes.
I don't have anything.
Normally, we are turning to you at this time, Jim. Very well, future meeting dates, we will be having our second meeting in April, here in the district boardroom, on Monday the eighteenth at seven o'clock. That meeting will be hosted by Richfield Dual Language School. Our first meeting in May is Monday the second, that also will be held here in the district boardroom at seven o'clock P M. Are there suggested agenda items? We know that we will be moving forward with several policies. Very well, I would ask for a motion on adjournment.
Still moved.
Sorry. So a motion by Paulus, second by Ashmead, that we adjourn, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, we are adjourned.